The GPS satellites. It's a pretty scary thought.
Don't worry, they pardon you.
They pardon them?
Yeah.
I know they put up an additional set of them. Further up to military.
It shows it's five thirty. We'll call the November fourth City Council of Cresco, Iowa, meeting to order. Roll call.
Herman.
President.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Drainer.
Tonight we'll act on the consent agenda, which consists of approval of the agenda, approval of the claims, the minutes from October twenty first, twenty twenty four, the minutes from October twenty ninth, twenty twenty four work session, approval of street closing permit for portions of Third Avenue West, Second Avenue West alley between Third Avenue West and Fourth Avenue West and North Elm Street for United Methodist Church Fall Dinner on November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, and approval of special Class C retail alcohol license without door service to Fat Tees Cafe LLC.
Second.
Roll call.
Rosa.
Yes.
Drainer.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
Yes.
Staff reports, Public Works.
Last week the DNR came and did an inspection at the water department. They come once every two years. Everything was fine. They had a couple of recommendations. They wanted to make sure our cybersecurity was intact because they've seen some smaller towns get hit by cyber issues and stuff when I mentioned it to Wendy and she feels pretty safe about it. They also brought up, we need to keep in mind that we need to keep replacing our four inch water mains because six inches of the minimum is for fire safety. So, otherwise, no, there's a good report. They did have a water main break on Division Street a couple of weeks ago. Got that fixed. On the wastewater side, the age-related replacement project, they haven't started yet, Wazex, but we feel they will proceed soon. Thursday at one o'clock, we have our final walkthrough with WHKS and Gen X Construction on the Seventh Street Project. Mostly water sewer and storm sewer. We'll pull the manholes and make sure all the water valves work and so on. Gen X does have a little bit of work to do out at Pond area yet, so hopefully they'll get that done soon. Next Monday or next Tuesday is the final curb site pickup for yard waste. And then I just want to touch on the yard waste site a little bit. We had Saturday. Sunday I went out and just drove through there and there was a lot of crap out there. Boards, a lot of boards and flower pots and stuff like that. We were able to track some of them down today. But I think we need to, I don't know if we want to put it as an agenda item again or how you want to move forward with it, but I think we got to figure out a better way out there and, you know, we used to have people monitor it. I don't know why that was stopped. It could be financial. So I don't know, but it seems to be an ongoing thing. So, anybody wants to sit down and talk, let me know. But I think we need to consider something out there that may, it might be as simple as, you know, instead of calling people and telling them to come and get their stuff, is the law enforcement's involved and they get charged too. So, but we'll figure that out. So, that's what I have today.
I'll just comment that one thing that's really improved is once they built that little pen or something for the smaller stuff, that's really a lot better.
Yep, yep. It's on the CIP lots.
Yeah.
I don't know if we know an exact footage. We can come up with it probably through the GIS program.
Is it a mandate or a recommendation?
I think it's a recommendation for fire safety is the reason. I don't think anybody's came and said you have to do it. No, not yet, right. Right, so, yeah.
All right. Thanks, Dave.
You're welcome.
Number two, police. They're not in attendance. Number three, administration.
I'm busy with my month and NCI P. The budget request are due from the department has on November thirteenth. I sent the digital to set up the department's meeting for budgets earlier today. We have a kickoff. I'll text my level already. We'll be having weekly trainings with them until we're active. It should be about in thirty days. We may be able to speed that up a little bit faster, so we try and do as much as we can with the coming of the summer. RFDs are due for audit services on November eighth, so it's Friday. I'll need two council members to help review the proposals and to make a full recommendation for council.
Wait a minute.
They're due Friday, so probably next Thursday. So far, I only have one. We submitted four community foundation programs this year, the Police for National Night Out, the Parks to the Beatle Park Sign, the Fire Department for Fire, falls and nozzles, and the Center for Architectural Services. And Amber and I will be attending the conference next week, put on the hours and things.
All right. Thanks, Nikki. Committee updates.
I don't have a committee update, but I was reading the Utility Board ruling on the Alliant rate increase. And I did notify Rich and Dave and I think maybe Nikki. We talked about, we had talked with Alliant about their customer hosted program for solar out at the airport. We couldn't do it because we were stacking stuff right there. And now buried in the ruling from the IUB is that they're freezing that program, so they're not taking any new participants. So, bad news.
I had a chamber meeting, so I was just going to let everybody know of a couple of events that are coming up in town soon. So Jingle in Your Pocket starts this Friday at eight. Of course, the Pancake Supper is tomorrow night at the fire station. Shop Small Saturday is November thirtieth. The Christmas open houses downtown for the stores will be on the twenty fourth and the Holiday Praise on the twenty ninth at four o'clock.
Thanks, Jen. Anything else? If not, we'll move on to comments from the audience. This section's reserved for anything that's not on the agenda currently. If there are none, we just want to...
Yeah.
But I was waiting for somebody else to pop up since you didn't.
And if you'd state your name and your address too, please.
Jennifer Frack. I just recently moved back to Cresco. I live in the trailer court over on South Elm Street. I don't know my exact address.
No.
So anyway, it came to my attention that there are twenty and three year old dogs. That I'm not sure exactly who it's more to work against about dog animals. The landlord is saying that the mayor is saying it, the mayor is saying that somebody else has been rented to by other people. I physically have dogs that obviously do not, right now I'm staying in my family's home. One's got cancer and one has lung cancer. They're also twelve and fourteen years old. I have really, they've never been away from us. We've always had puppies. So we are wondering who to actually talk to to get where our dog can be there with us. I have pictures. I keep them clean. I mean, to be honest, I've had cops who have actually been in my house and have been very bad to me. But basically, this is actually a whole bunch of dogs. So I don't have proof or sure to getting them is able to come with us.
How many do you have?
I have three.
Three? Do that three total animals, three dogs?
Yes.
And no other ones?
No. There are also friends on shots that are in the house.
Right.
No one has actually been out there to say they saw a third.
So when you say kennel, it's a building outside, outdoors for them?
Actually, we have it as a, it started out as a ten by thirty. It's down to ten by twenty.
Ten foot by twenty foot?
Yeah, which there is twenty or more three year olds where I have to put it there. Plus obviously extra.
Right. Right. I remember talking with Derek a little bit about it and I'm not sure, I don't think if he has the final say so in that too. But you just have three dogs, three dogs and one kennel.
Yeah, and that's good. We, when we're at work, we're in there. They're never left on the tree. There's always someone there.
And they're outdoors?
They love being outdoors, being inside. Obviously, that's what they do regularly, but we have things like dog treats, but they're never on the tree.
Okay.
I've never had anybody complain to us about them being noisy. But like, so Derek owns the property.
Yep.
But I, the other person that owns the trailer court, over on Red Bull, Bull Valley, we work. He's actually the one who purchased the trailer for us. For a while there, we were living in a Ford and Tom's garage. And we were just, our issue was having problems with dogs. Trying to find a place to go and have fun. Obviously, I took it, I had it together with my son. So he was going to buy it. He goes, we could have a trailer or a kennel there. And then essentially buying it, it was a bunch of things that changed. So it worked.
Who told you you could have the kennel there initially?
The guy that bought the trailer for us. As you said, Derek said okay to. But Derek has seen a picture of our dog kennel. I mean, I have a picture of you guys that all have to see it too. We physically have had to learn the hard way and make sure they dig out the numbers because I know that's a problem with how a lot. Actually, we had saved one the other day that was quite loose.
Sure.
From the toll. But we physically have rubber mats all the way underneath so they can't dig out. We have tent all the way around so they can't dig out the bottom of the kennel. We probably have a lot of those in there as well, so just to make sure they are not going through the last bit. And they're also planted so they can't, because they're smart dogs, they can definitely very closely see the door. We don't learn the hard way when it comes to first to the dogs. But our biggest problem concern is that we like to have them come with us.
Right.
Because I don't have to go to the tour every day to keep an eye on them when I don't have to go to the tour.
And Dave would actually be your point of contact on that. Dave can explain the code to you, go through everything. I don't know if there's any stipulations in the land lease with Derek as far as Derek to the trailer owner. I don't, we don't know anything like that. We're not privy to that, but...
So when that's ours, the trailer, we can keep it longer if we need to. And that would be one of the things we're thinking of there.
Right.
There's a lot of these shades. My T say, she say, so I can get it to look, or you have to use something else.
No, we appreciate you coming in too and talking with us about it, so you get it straight from...
Like she has depression and her dogs can't even do her business. She doesn't want to be, in her eyes, she doesn't want to be where, her dogs can't be there, but neither can we. It's kind of a weird thing. But obviously, she has really bad depression too, which she wants to help us to work. And I have depression too, and my dogs do not help me with that. But I do not know.
How big did you say it was?
It's a ten by two.
Ten by twenty, okay.
So Dave will look into it. If you wanted to stick around or leave, or call Dave tomorrow morning and discuss it further. Dave can tell you what the code is.
I can give you my number.
Yeah, I'll just have you write it down here, so. So let's get, you discussed it with your neighbor, you put up a kennel.
Oh, and they're all fine with it.
Do the neighbors on either side of your neighborhood?
They're all fine with it because they specifically don't want to take their dogs. I live in the other trailer court. And we had them ten by thirty there before.
Is your other dog home?
Huh?
Is your other dog's home?
Yeah, they're kind of in their home place.
I'm not sure how that works, you know, since you're renting lands from the embassy. And if he tells you there's a kennel, that maybe how it is too.
Yeah, it should just like, everybody's saying differently. You kind of just want to get that to the bottom of it. It's a little rural. Like I said, there are, two of them are really old and stuff like that, whereas they're not really getting home.
But we'll look into it and Dave will reach out to you and find out for sure.
If I don't answer this, I won't go to the next page.
Okay. Okay, all right. Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming, coming and asking questions about it, so. For sure, so.
Thank you guys.
Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there are no other comments, we want to recognize two employees for their anniversaries. We have Adam Barnes in the Street Department, who's been here for ten years, and Dean Reichs, who has spent thirty-three years with the Street Department. Moving on to new business. Item number one, review bids for land lease agreement for the airport farmland.
So they were due today and I received four of them back. I have Brian Schmidt at three hundred and twenty per acre. So the total for the year would be twenty-two thousand eighty. Eric Over at two hundred and sixty-eight per acre, so it would be eighteen four ninety-two. Matt and Mike Mynear at three hundred and ten, which is twenty-one three ninety. And Jim Mar at two fifteen, which will be fourteen eight thirty-five. So I'll make a motion that we go with Brian Schmidt for three twenty an acre.
Second.
Roll call.
Herman.
Yes.
Rosa.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Drainer.
Item number two, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a farm lease agreement.
And I just wanted to mention, I know we had talked a little bit about the sludge you can play with at the airport. It is non-credence because we have it done before, so it's not advertised that way. So it's not included in this, because we have other things.
I mean, it's a rental, you know, payway, I think.
Right.
We still go forward with whatever testing we have to do. It's actually, we came back and it's, so.
And we don't want to use that if we needed it.
So moved.
Roll call.
Hassan.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Drainer.
Yes.
Yes.
Item number three, resolution authorizing the city clerk to enter into a third-party administration service agreement with Employee Benefit Systems, EBS.
EBS is, the processes are, they're part of the, after the process of all that.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
McConnell.
Yes.
Hassan. Herman.
Yes.
Drainer.
Yes.
Item number four, resolution authorizing transfer of funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget amendment number one transfers.
These are just from the best of the numbers because it's all very easy to transfer.
So moved.
Second.
Sorry.
Second.
No, my just, I'm sorry.
Roll call.
Drainer.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Yes.
Item number five, resolution approving and authorizing a form of loan and disbursement agreement by, by in between the city of Cresco, Iowa, the Iowa Finance Authority, and authorizing and providing for the issuance and securing the payment of one million nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. Sewer revenue capital loan notes, series twenty twenty-four of the city of Cresco, Iowa, under the provisions of the Code of Iowa, and providing for a method of payment of said notes, approval of tax exemption certificate. Roll call.
Herman.
Yes.
Rosa.
Yes.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yeah.
I'll just comment, that was one of the most boring times, things I've read.
And I hear you're talking, attorney, I did ask a clarification on a question. Amy had a question about something about that. And she said she's never had anybody.
Yeah. It's like, oh my.
Item number six, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a financial services agreement with Piper Sandler and Company.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Rosa.
Yes.
Drainer. McConnell. Hassan.
Yes.
Yes.
Item number seven, discuss storm sewer intake on Fifth Street Southwest and possible motion to proceed with the project.
So Mike's here tonight and still, good evening, still planning on building there, correct? Yeah. And so, and I'll let you explain how you expect the water and everything to flow that way.
Well, I think...
Well, everybody has one of these.
It's just a bit of a ground, so I can see this a few months. So I think I might have mentioned, maybe you discussed it, but I've been going through a lot of water. There's bubbles up on the backside of, it's a piece of solid, southwest corner. And the whole problem I'm having with the substation. It's been running down the street for as long as I've been in this area. And we've totally, because we have these, we have those. And so we're trying to really understand, other than the drop right now, and last year, we didn't have stops. We didn't really, it's been a bit of a... Obviously, you guys are very well to, in the construction. We'd like to cure the problem because I know we're going to think that part, I'm keeping insisting, hoping that's on their side. Make sure we have enough stops, which is where we're crossing the road. As there's, as there's always, so we can also, you know, start from the bottom. And there's a situation where you have the, the situation, you have a similar situation where you have, actually, a, actually, supervision, or similar situation, where you have, actually, or actually, still, in the city, that's a side of the park. So I guess what I was asking was, is fifteen thousand one hundred and three, we were talking to this, about how, um, the pickup, which, I mentioned, where, maybe trying to see property as, where you want, and what you're actually trying to just name it, seeing it, just in that city, or, it's probably, uh, probably, uh, which we had. So, when I reference this actually, how it, we need to, actually, somebody, uh, like, the, by, if you say, uh, protection, and, 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 that's why, uh, we're not, we're not, uh, 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 we're[197.61]
But moving a regular dumpster strikes me as real annoyance.
We have dumpsters sit on the, so I'll film there for, for the restaurant for three months.
Oh, probably more than that.
Yeah, more than that.
I could get other stuff better. I mean, I had, I put windows in it. I had a dumpster there. It was gone for three days. Somebody yelled through the trash and made the dumpster go.
And the other, the only other thing too is there is a, I know from personal experience, Hawkeye does charge us a setting fee for the roll offs as well. So every, anytime they would pick it up or drop it off, there would be a fee assessed to that too for a business owner in the downtown area, I guess, looking at that.
Or burden people anymore, you know, stuff that's the same thing. There's gotta be respect for your neighbors, parking, snowmobile. Right, I mean, we're not gonna, we're not gonna obviously fall around them several weeks on the road.
I think that's what's happened.
Well, we have.
The business places in that hall under the snow emergency. I was thinking, can't I have them in the street during the snow emergency unless they wanna get all the dumb stuff around them away from it?
I don't think especially anything on wheels, to me, falls under all of the parking. You know, the dumpsters that have no wheels and just sit there. If there's a setting fee each time, then that's, that's.
I think at the very least, it should be kind of under the snow asking at the time versus month on end.
And maybe that's something that we put, we look at for our ordinances, we put a section in there. Whether we do a permit or we do something along those lines for how long it'll be there, how long. It, it, I know when you're doing construction, the last thing you wanna do is think about, well, I gotta drop this off, pick this up, or whatever it may be, but. Long term.
Right, and the other thing too, it's one thing if they're actively working.
Very much so.
You know, if it sits there and nobody does anything for a month, that's, I don't, is there a per day charge on dumpsters?
Yes.
Yeah, but they could have had some different rules on that.
Roll off, roll offs are per day.
So dumpsters are not per day?
I think dumpsters are per month, but I'm not a hundred percent certain on that.
That's what ours was. Alex's was per month.
I've, I've got a roll off in front of.
I think it's based on the size and the number of times you want to take stuff.
Right.
I, I just know that I have a roll off in front of my house right now and that's, I'm paying a per day fee and a, a setting fee and all of that, so.
So there is, there is um a reason to not let something go around by the tool, but, yeah.
Yeah, but we all know that once things get someplace, they're mentally hard to move.
Yeah, this is a question I thought. Got one more.
I guess to me, if they're on wheels, like you pull them with a vehicle wheel, it's not a, like a dumpster out here that you pull her on my hand, I don't mean that, but if, if.
A dump trailer.
A dump trailer and a, and stuff like that, to me, they should follow every, all the ordinance.
You know, maybe if they don't have wheels, they shouldn't be allowed for the dumpster. They park them behind the vehicles or something. So they can be moved after the snow.
Yeah, that's a decent idea.
It's just a little bit, you know, like, you know, idea acting, you know, if it's close to a sidewalk, they got no place to.
Downtown can be a lot harder than residential and smaller. The backyard, the driveway.
Of course, yours are in the yard and the street.
It's in the driveway.
There's been situations where they won't be able to put them in a yard, put them in a driveway, you might have to cap a time or whatever, you know, seven days and that's it.
And that could be part of, well, I was gonna say it could be part of a building permit, but if it's renovation, where they don't get a building permit, then we wouldn't know that. Could be something to talk about probably with Hawkeye.
I mean, sometimes it's their dump in the street just out of convenience because they're up in there, they flop them down the goal. You know, you put them hooking on, huh? That is for Hawkeye too, because what happened to me was they put a dumpster in, which was a small open top. They actually tore a tree, a tree limb from that dumpster. So that's probably why they were putting it in the street, you know, they don't want to have any of the.
And, you know, I'm not sure that anyone objects for short periods of times, but there are some dumpsters that just, like, take up residence. And so I like the idea of, you know, you can put it in the street, but there's, there's a time limit, so think about when you put it out there.
But at least sometimes there's a heavy snow and they immediately put the dumpster.
Well.
Would this be something that, just to clearly communicate it with our downtown businesses, that we go to the downtown business committee meeting and discuss it with them and explain what we're, what we, what we've seen, what we've experienced, what we've had, and get their input, so we don't, I mean, we don't wanna step on toes, but we also wanna make sure that we keep things on the up and up. A simple appearance at one of those meetings to discuss it may alleviate some heartburn that we may face further down the line.
Well, and, you know, who's doing the renovations? Talk with them too.
Yeah.
And, I mean, 'cause we want people to, to fix up their upper stories and, let's face it, it's easier to slide things down a slide.
But I, I think.
Yeah, I know, I like.
I mean, just short term, so that we can make sure that we're doing the right thing and we're not, we're not harming our downtown business owners by doing this. I think it'd be a good idea to get their input on it as well, because they're the ones that are going to be renovating and doing those things. If we give them the opportunity to give their input, then we're all on the same page at that point and we're not, we don't wanna hurt our downtown.
So if they're on wheels that you pull like a trailer, whether you're tossing them, we get the snow emergency.
Be just like any other parking in the ordinance.
Yeah, okay.
Well, if they don't wanna move it, let's say they just park it behind it. I mean, what's the difference if you carry the stuff out the back, you carry it out the front, right? So if it doesn't look very good having dumpsters in the downtown, right? And if they're fixing upstairs up and they're gonna build some chute, they could do that on the backside, sure.
I mean, of course, it could be fixing up the back of the building too.
You know, dumpsters on the streets should be just streets, downtown.
I don't, I just something I thought I wanted to mention, um, the other part was, um, you know, somebody has come and they've brought up him, somebody is running the driveway. So the car does not even address the, address it, it just says for service station. I think you guys might have added.
No, I, I'm talking about the noise. I, I don't, and, and this says nine P M. to six A M. I'm sorry, I don't think that those semis should be running in a residential area at any time of the day. More than thirty minutes or whatever drop off loading. And I'm thinking of one that seems to like to do that.
And I, I think what was brought up, and I think you did mention it in here about, uh, letting them run while they, so they don't gel up, right? Did I see that in here?
Well, let them run someplace else, not in a residential area.
So the current ordinance actually says they cannot do it in any street alley, public or private parking lot or driveway in a service station. So like big white builds on that, that's private parking. So according to this, they should not be running. Not necessarily in a residential area.
They're a fair distance away from them, trying to think of habitable.
No, they're right behind the apartment.
But usually, I drive by there every day and usually they're plugged in. They don't, they don't run overnight or anything like that, but.
If you've got something, if you've got a thermostat, you have it running on a freezer, a reefer. You know, they're gonna, they're gonna hum or an A P U. that's hanging on the side of the truck kicking on and off. I mean, the reefer's gonna be kinda noisy and it's.
Do you put this, do you put that in the ordinance then, in a non-commercial property? If you state non-commercial property, it, it covers your residential, it covers any of that.
So that would probably take care of that. How often are they running?
Yeah, I've never seen them.
I, I've not seen, uh, driving, 'cause I go by there every single morning and every single afternoon, I've never seen them running the equipment there. Um, but that doesn't mean that it couldn't happen.
Like by reading this, like Fairway, they've got, where they can park this semi in the back, and I don't know if the trucks are running. If the truck came in at four and they let it run overnight according to this, they shouldn't be doing that.
Right. I think they come in at five.
I just didn't understand the damn, it's their own private parking lot, so I mean.
I mean, yeah, I mean, they have no fuel, it puts the RKC, I don't know, I think they shut them off, I think. I think in the residential, I think, I don't think they should be running a residential myself. I dated twenty years ago. It doesn't make sense.
I did have one gentleman call me two weeks ago about this, about truck parking. And I called him back and I haven't heard anything back yet, but he asked to discuss it. And I'm not sure where he lives here in town, but.
Well, I think what you've got is to be a separate site. And it could always change. And having some parking in residential area, you know, you're coming in eighty thousand pounds of residential cones.
It also.
That's one thing, depending whether they run half the night or all night.
It also might be a situation where they don't realize that they can park at the airport, that they can park in other park, public parking areas too. Um, it might be as simple as a conversation there too, but.
I think that people, the majority of these guys are a little bit, it's just an inconvenience because they have somebody picking it up, dropping it off, moving it. I know there's guys that leave their trucks set out there during the course of the week.
I think he does a lot of convenience, yeah, 'cause he's holding a river or something, but.
When he gets over the takeout.
Yeah.
So the current ordinance says twenty-four hours, but one of the options has no parking, another one just to drop off.
Right.
To go. Another one has two hours, at least, that lasts.
Yeah. I know, talking with Tim, two, you know, two hours, it's, somebody's gotta keep track of that then.
We don't keep track, we have only four hours.
I know, yeah, I know. So that way, if it's no, no hours, then they're not gonna keep track of it.
Right, but like if somebody comes home, stays a shower, they can't even leave it.
So not really enforcing.
We're not enforcing the current one, but yet we wanna make it more strict. I don't know.
If you say go up this, go make it focus something that's gonna enforce.
Right, I mean, I guess stuff one to me would be start enforcing the twenty-four hours.
With, with something like that, I'll do that one.
It might be something that we should talk with Tim over this too and get his thoughts and feelings on it.
I mean, what we have here, I think option one is what, what Tim and I have come up with. And he was okay with it, I mean, if we want another meeting, we can certainly do that.
I think since he's going to be the one enforcing everything, that we should definitely get his input on the, the truck situation, the dumpster situation. Personally, I, I'd like to see us go to business, um, downtown business association, discuss it with them. Explain what our intentions are with it and have a constructive conversation so we don't impact or, don't negatively impact our downtown businesses. 'Cause it, it, it's tough enough to get people to fill the buildings. If we make it harder on them, it's going to make it even worse and we don't wanna.
What, what if you change the residential district to overnight?
No.
Easier to enforce.
Okay, well, okay, parking, but they have to shut it off.
No overnight parking.
Right, okay.
No.
No, my concern is running it.
Right, but if they can't park it there, they can't run it there.
Right, but I don't want them to run it during the day either.
If they popped in during the day, it's gonna make it at least they're.
I'd be worried about that.
I was thinking of like.
No, I think I'm going back to the question. Might be something to take a look at there, overnight parking.
Versus limited.
And then take care of the noise issue in a separate ordinance, separate section under noise.
Right.
So kinda where are we leaving it for that?
Yeah, the kind of problem though is some of our streets, if you park a semi. I'm thinking of, not that I've seen a semi in Division Street, but it's gonna get pretty narrow.
Oh, it is, and I've seen it where there is trucks parked in the left hand.
And.
They don't even have the cones on, or they left the trailer there. And if that knocked over, you know, like wind and something suspicious flying up there, flashing the trees, you know, they're ready to go back to the trailer.
You know, the good news is we've already covered our trailer with our ordinance now, as far as what we allow in the street and all of those things. So when we see that, our officers can handle that appropriately. I know what you mean exactly.
Also, I've seen one parked a little bit close to the stop sign where they're not gonna see it, the stop sign.
So that's, that's, that, I mean, that kind of, to me, that, that's showing that we need to discuss it a little bit further with them and get, get a better feel for what they can and cannot enforce and how they can and cannot enforce it. Yeah, 'cause it, we might be opening up Pandora's box and.
Semi, I think is one that with the cameras, it's the obvious though.
Yeah.
It's been all summer.
And right now, we're talking about trucks, right?
Yeah.
The overnight thing might solve it all.
But. So I guess we're leaving it as, we're getting with it.
With the truck side of it.
Truck side, yeah. The dumpster stuff in the middle of businesses.
I, I think that's the best situation to reduce any heartburn or headache that we may have, um, between business owners and ourselves is if we clearly communicate it ahead of time, there won't be any surprises and then at that point in time, we're, we're all on the same page.
Well, there'd be a chamber meeting, so what, how would we communicate?
We, we should, we should get with Jason, 'cause the downtown business committee meeting is different from the chamber meeting. Um, and I don't remember how often they meet, do you know?
They, so the, which one do you go to?
Chamber.
So the downtown one, is that eight in the morning or they go?
Chamber's eight o'clock in the morning, it's like with the Wednesday or Thursday of the month.
'Cause I know I talked to Jason about going to a meeting, I don't remember, it's, I think it might be the downtown one, and he said there's not a lot of, um, any business owners at that meeting. It's a lot of people that work in the businesses, so I don't know if that would necessarily be the one, but, uh, we could talk to Jason and see what he says.
'Cause Jason, I think Jason would be a great asset to be a part of this discussion too, because he's, obviously, he would be facing some of the backlash too with what the city may or may not be doing and, um, he may have some ideas too on how to better manage it. So we can make sure that we're doing the right thing, 'cause I don't, I don't want to impact our downtown businesses in a negative manner of this.
The Cresco Chamber Business Committee meets the third Wednesday of the month at eight A M.
I think that's the one that Jason was telling me that not many of the business owners come to.
There, there isn't, it's just, um, like eleven people. And me, Jason and the secretary are three of them, so.
And there's an, I remember the, remember when we started the sidewalk project, there's also an issue between who comes, the building owners versus the businesses. And in some cases, you wanna talk to the building owners, and in some cases, you wanna talk to the businesses. In this case, it would be the building owners, 'cause they're the ones who are gonna renovate and they don't come.
And perhaps maybe that's an, that's an issue where we can also get Jason's input to reach out to those individuals to say, hey, here's what the city is thinking and discuss it, what, now whether we need to have a work session with them or whatever, however we need to do that. But at least if we've communicated or made an effort to communicate it, that way we're not going backwards.
Yeah, that's fine.
We're going forward, everything right now until we come up with an ordinance that we enter for, we're gonna treat it as the emergency snow roll. We'll move it side to side. If they were wheels.
Any, anything with wheels, yeah. So dump trailers, dump trailers, construction trailers, anything of that sorts at this point in time, that's what our, that's what our ordinance reads and that's how we'll follow, Susan.
Semis, I think, if they're on the street, more than twenty-five, it's a park lot.
The hospital, you know, like, if they're in the neighborhood.
Correct.
So as far as the noise ordinance, um, do you guys just leave the residential area only? Is that private parking lot, um, will it affect, um, the street area?
Right, that would be White's.
Right, what's the area?
What's that zone, is that zone commercial?
Yes.
I, I think we would wanna say, if we make an exemption, we'd wanna say private parking lots in the commercial or industrial area because there are private parking lots in the residential area.
Residential's one area.
Right.
Commercial's another. No, no overnight semi parking in residential, no running motors, no A P U.s. But in a commercial area, that's off that highway?
Well, but, but think about all the people that live upstairs on Elm Street. I'm not sure I'd want, I mean, it's one thing in Fairway's parking lot, but it's another thing in front of Holstrom's.
But that's, that's public.
But in front of Holstrom's, technically they should not be parking between three and six A M.
Right. I mean, I, I think we're talking about, about two different things there.
No, we're only talking about the noise.
Right, I mean, but how many semis are gonna be parked on Elm Street between the midnight to, let's just say.
I don't want any.
There shouldn't be any parked on Elm.
Right. Well, I mean, or semi, I think there's some, there's some, I don't know.
Well, on Main Street, that would all be considered public parking, the, the lot that's behind.
This lot over here.
That lot over here, this, the, the theater lot, this lot over here, that's all public parking.
Private parking would be like dollars down the road, parking lot, Fairway, dollar three, maybe.
The only, the only margins is a little. Back to use and, and that's usually all kind of.
So the, the question was, should Fairway, we'll take that, not because we're dumping on Fairway, but because they have an obvious private parking lot.
So right here, it says they can't do that.
Right, and the question that was being raised was, should we take that out or make a change to it?
I think if you make.
Or White's.
If you would call it commercial parking. 'Cause Fairway's own commercial.
But North Elm is, and the business district is own commercial too.
So if we're talking about commercial lots or.
Private parking on commercial property.
In the commercial zone.
Yeah.
Has a commercial lot in the industrial area?
Yes.
'Cause it would have to have that private parking lot designation and then be in the parking industrial area.
Right.
Some of those do, but residential areas, so we're not necessarily getting accomplished what we want, but.
Well, then we better think about it.
It'd be different someone talking about commercial parking lots versus streets. You know, if you're in North Elm, you could say the street is a, it says something about a parking lot, that doesn't mean it's a parking on the street. Right, it's a building behind the theater. It's a lot.
Correct, so it says no such vehicles shall be left standing or parked on any street, alley, public parking lots.
Public or private.
So they, right now, they're not supposed to, for instance, do, it would be against a lot of parks over here again.
Between nine and six.
No, that's the, that's the, that's for the service station part.
Ah, no, no.
I would read it as any parking on nine and six.
Right.
I would read it for that.
No, I, I read it the way.
Okay. That's something we would wanna maybe make a little more clear then.
Maybe we wanna decide what we want before we veritsmith it.
After six A M., they'll describe what we're, what we're shooting for. And, you know, maybe we say that, you know, we got the airport out there, that's the only place you can park.
We're talking about parking over there.
Yeah, with, with Coors running their A P U.s. or whatever.
Two, two different things, you know, unloading, you know, too, that parking is mentioned.
Yeah.
So unloading, as long as it's after six o'clock, it's not an issue. It's gonna only be parked or unloaded, if you change it, well, practically.
So are we better, going back to what Amy said, are we better to come up with a list of what the council would like for truck parking or what, what we want for truck parking within city limits? And come to the table with these things that we want and then veritsmith it from there and figure out how to put the verbiage together.
I'm for that. Yeah.
We're not gonna set up something that, and of course, that is not willing to.
And that's, that's exactly why I would like Tim to be involved, because he's critical to anything that we put out for a code. He needs to be aware of and, and have his final say in, because if we make it and they can't enforce it, well, we've wasted time doing that and then we wear egg on our face and that's not a good book.
And do you guys wanna like send me this, so, what do you guys prefer?
And we're only talking about truck parking. Are we talking, are we restricting it to semis or are we including light panel vans and stuff?
Describe them here.
Well, you have two options, which, I guess, I'd be up in the side. Option one added, option two is, I don't know.
Great capacity, you wanna agree to that?
Well, and I guess, see, in my mind, I've been looking at the noise thing and I have an opinion about noise. And that's separate from parking. In other words, so which are we talking about? Which are we gonna give you our opinions on? The noise?
Well, that whole section, I would say that whole section, whole section, section sixty-nine oh nine.
Okay, cool, I can do that.
It would be my thought.
Okay.
Was there anything else pertaining to the proposed parking and recreational vehicle ordinance?
Wait a minute, let's just do sixty-nine oh nine.
Okay.
Before we get too confused.
Okay, so we'll baby step that then.
Yeah.
So then, if you guys do, do the limiting, the RVs, folks, campers, or homes, um, I do feel that we need to also update ordinance, um, chapter eighty-one. And so permitted use, I have recreational vehicles, will not be allowed to park on the boulevard or park there after more than forty consecutive hours. And then parking on the city street is only permitted for reasonable time that may be necessary to go unload passengers, pray for other merchandise, pass through the bed in section sixty-nine oh nine. That kinda. What you guys are thinking of that?
I think that starts out, I think, because I think we've been talking about this one for three months.
Yeah. We managed to confuse ourselves so well.
Right.
Uh, we, we managed to confuse ourselves so well.
If I was gonna confuse right, you know, I'm like, wait a minute.
And maybe that, you know, maybe then the answer is no parking of RVs in the boulevard or front yard. 'Cause that's what's gonna happen if they can't park in the street, then somebody's gonna go in the boulevard, somebody's gotta keep traffic. Forty hours.
I can grab you a glass, I'm trying to tell you the street, I'm fucking with a boulevard being.
Well, and I can show you trailers that aren't RVs and it looks just as bad as, in, in the front yard.
They're just gonna get something started.
Yeah, so that's something to think about then too.
Sixty-nine oh nine, you got it.
And eighty-one point oh.
Eighty-one oh three.
You want, you want stuff of both of them? What do you, when you say eighty-one oh?
Eighty-one oh three, since it references sixty-nine oh nine.
V R five one nine.
Put down with the ordinance, I can make this quick, I, I must know Dave did, out the sewer or out to the airport there, and that title line that they put in. If we go down with the ordinance, I can make this quick, uh, on the day they was out the sewer, or out to the airport there, in that tidal line that they put in, you can see that's been working exactly the way it was designed and planned, water levels are down, water running through there, no water sitting in that, and we kind of have like three inches here over and the last, most of it went straight into the ground, but it is doing what it's intended to do.
Great news.
Saturday or Sunday morning, there was water up almost to the top of that biggest culvert, and it's almost all gone there, and that's the, that was the intention. Forty-eight hours later, it'd be gone, so.
So there was no issues out of our neighborhood on the other side of the airport, and it was a lot of running down to the, to the river.
And there's a lot of nice cousins back there, which is detected.
All right, if there's nothing else, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Little call?
Donald.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Media adjourn.